It is six thirty. We're gonna go ahead and get started. It appears that we may be short a couple of council members. Mr. Snoll, how long is it appropriate to wait?
Mayor, that's really up to you. There's nothing in the Open Meetings Act that I'm aware of that says how long you wait for a quorum. It is my opinion you need a quorum to proceed beyond this point. So it would be, I think, appropriate to wait for a few minutes to see if you do get a quorum for this meeting. Because it's not a regular meeting, a special meeting, you do need a quorum of four members of the governing body, not including the mayor. So I see Mr. McCormick and Ms. McLean. We need two other of the members of the governing body for you all to have a quorum for a special meeting.
Okay, sir. Well, with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and wait about ten minutes before we decide to do anything. It's six thirty-one, so around six forty-one we'll decide how to proceed. Well, it looks like we have a quorum. Mr. Snoll, I believe that we can proceed, correct?
That is my opinion, sir.
Okay. Do we have anybody here for the invocation? I don't see anybody, so we'll go ahead and skip that. Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Stevens? Okay. Thank you for that, chief. First up, we have a presentation slash discussion of the preliminary fiscal year 2020 budget for the administration and municipal court departments. Mr. Rapley?
Yes, mayor, we have a presentation in reference to the administration department and Judge McCullough's here in regards to municipal court. I think what will go quickly through our department, budget presentations, and then the last one, I'll have a overview of the proposed budget which I submitted last week.
Mr. Rapley? Was, I understand there was a packet?
Yes, I left it at dispatch.
But nobody told us there was a packet.
I sent an email on Friday with the agenda and packet.
It doesn't say there's a packet. It says just the agenda. It said nothing about a packet.
I received no notification either. I'll pull up the email later, but I left it at dispatch for collection on Friday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
May I read the email that I received from Mr. Rapley on Friday at 5:49 PM?
Sure.
"Mayor and council, please see attached agenda for Tuesday, August 20, special city council meeting for the FY 2020 proposed budget. Yesterday I submitted, filed the FY 2020 proposed budget to the city secretary Melissa Gonzalez. The FY 2020 proposed budget is available on the city's website. Agenda packet, including a copy of FY 2020 proposed budget, will be at dispatch for collection with an attachment."
Okay, thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. Rapley, are you ready?
Yes.
Please proceed.
First, on the agenda, we're gonna go through the administration department, obviously just give a quick overview of the staff within that department, and then the total budget. Obviously, some technical difficulties tonight.
I guess we need to budget for some new computer software or hardware.
Could even come down just to battery, mayor. Okay, the total proposed budget for the administration is 1,036,295. Briefly, I'll give you some overviews. Go back real quick. Sorry. I noted a few things from my standpoint as city manager. Day-to-day operations, obviously devoting my working time and attention to the affairs of the city. Responsible to city, efficient administration in its affairs, implement the policy decisions to city council, deliver the annual budget, provide monthly financials, advise city council of financial condition and needs of the city, and act as a purchasing agent. We have an administrative assistant to the city manager. Some of those duties encompass intake application, preliminary review for board and commissions, plat research, zoning consultation, code interpretation, manage, monitor social media, assist with public information requests. Other signs of due, other signed duties by the city manager. Go ahead, Melissa. City secretary, Ms. Gonzalez in that position, obviously attend meetings, prepare agenda and packets, post a legal notices, maintain the official records, assist the city manager of maintenance and public information requests, schedule and oversee all city elections, perform other duties required by law ordinance resolutions in order of the council and city manager. Go ahead, Melissa. Go ahead, Melissa. Sorry, co-compliance. We have a co-compliance officer full-time, Mr. Zamaron. I've listed some of the duties here, obviously proactive, being out in the community, prepare and execute search warrants, documents, conduct extensive research on ownership, lien holders, other characteristics of properties, meets and coordinates with the city manager, elected officials, other departments, self-prescribed forms, techniques, operational plans, tracks documents, all fees and fines, obviously works closely with our municipal court on any violations that are submitted to the court itself, review, recommend, and assist in amending the code of ordinance when applicable. Go ahead, Melissa. The finance, right now, we obviously have a finance director that we're looking for. We have a consultant right now due to the vacant position. And I've listed the administration to finance or finance clerk, which was partially funded in FY 2019. Some of the highlights for both those positions, obviously helping prepare the budget, monitoring monthly financials, maintain the city's financial records and required financial reporting, process daily deposits, payroll, process bi-weekly, monthly, quarterly reports, required for all payroll, research, prepare annual employee benefits package, coordinate the annual city financial audit. Go ahead, Melissa. The permit clerk, obviously this was partially funded in 2019. This involves issuing the permits, solicitor permits, pet registration, all permits involved across the board with our permit office, works with our building inspector during scheduled inspections, manages food and alcohol license renewals, accepts payments for police reports, assists court with payments, process through InCode cash collections to the city, sends a daily invoice to our inspector on upcoming scheduled, and works with our inspector to make sure that they're closed out and the inspections are done appropriately, and then does passports. The city council, last year we moved a line item to dedicate it to city council expenses. Last year, it included the single line item of 10-5082. This helped create a specific line for various city council needs to ensure adequate funding for council expenditures. This adds, obviously, a high degree of transparency and enhances the ability to track expenses related to the city council. And this, in the proposed budget, we itemized $5,000 for this line item. Some of the things that have come under this line item, obviously training, office supplies, special events, meeting supplies. We've also budgeted again 7,000 for election expenses, and then muni-code updates as we continue that process at 6,500. That concludes the administration department. Judge McCullough is here to give a presentation, an overview in relations to the municipal court.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good, Judge, thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, just to give you guys a brief overview, our Castle Hills Municipal Court is created under Chapter 29 of the Texas Government Code. It allows this jurisdiction to process fine only, fine only Class C misdemeanors that are filed in our court, i.e. traffic citations and city ordinance violations.
Judge, can you speak a little bit closer to the mic?
Oh, sure, sure. We became a quarter record on September 12, 2017. What that means is if somebody comes into our court now and asks for a record, we will provide a record like they do in county or district court. And only appeals can come out of our court now if the case is tried, and they can appeal points of error and not just appeal because they want to, like they were able to do prior to us becoming a quarter record. It allows us still jurisdiction over Class C misdemeanor offenses, and it gives us exclusive jurisdiction over the municipal ordinances. I can issue search warrants, and we can issue seizure warrants, all warrants now. The other thing is it gives us some concurrent jurisdiction with district court on abatement issues that we couldn't do before. Like if you had the habitual person that was not mowing their grass, for instance, or they had a junk car in the front yard, we could fine them before, and they could just pay the fine before they had to come to court and just start all over again. Now, the city prosecutors can file some paperwork, and they can actually get an order that abates the nuisance for, I guess, technically is what would happen. Our 2020 proposed budget, this would be overhead and labor, correct, Ryan? This, that's in that line? It's, it's $3,221.98, which is roughly about $26,827 a month. Our court personnel is the judge, myself, responsible for presiding over the court proceedings, and then I do magistrate functions. I have two alternate judges that come in when I can't be available. The prosecutor, he's responsible for overseeing the justice is done while representing the state. He resolves citations with defendants through plea, through plea agreements. He also prosecutes the abatement issues in our court now. The court clerk, she maintains the court records, processes clerical work, assists defendants in resolving their citations, and then we have a budget item for a deputy clerk, which assists defendants resolving their citations and assists the court clerk. Our total number of violations in 2018 was 6,794. Our total number of FTAs that were issued, which is failure to appear, was 1,291. Our total number of warrants issued was 3,616. The total number of warrants cleared, 3,528. From January to July this year, we've issued, or the police department's issued, 4,522 citations, which our courts processed. We've processed 732 FTAs. I've issued 1,607 warrants, and the warrant department has cleared 1,740 warrants through There are little pieces of each violation that runs through the court. I don't get into the revenue portion of it, because I'm not supposed to, but I can explain to you where things are gonna go. So what happens is there are, there's a child safety fund, so a certain percentage of the violation goes for promotion of child safety. The funds that are collected can go toward school crossing guard programs, promote child health and safety programs, i.e. child abuse, drug abuse, and alcohol abuse prevention. The proposed budget on that is $76,130. And that's what we, that's what we expect to collect off of the, off that line item of each fine. The court technology fund. Municipal court technology fund is set up through the 102.0172 Code of Criminal Procedure. The finance, the technologies utilized by the court for computer systems, networks, hardware, software, imaging systems, can be used for electronic kiosks and the electronic ticket writers. The proposed budget on that would be $28,160. Court security fund. That's set up through the local government code 102.017. It's used to finance the security measures utilized by the court. Uses of these funds are metal detectors, both handheld and walk-through, the bailiffs for court days and security personnel, electronic surveillance equipment used to purchase and repair of bulletproof glass, continuing education of the security issues by the court security personnel, used for warrant officers and related equipment, signage, identification card systems, video teleconferencing systems. Proposed budget on that would be $81,364. The efficiency fee. Efficiency fee is generated from time payment fee. That's if somebody comes in and they want a payment plan, and it's a non-defer, it's a non-deferral agreement. If they don't make a deferral, make a deferral agreement, it's not added, but if they make, they want time to pay, then if they go over, if it, zero to 30 days, there's no time payment fee. Thirty-one days till whenever there's a fee added to their, to their citation. It's 10%, of the time payment fee, it's infrequently collected, it's used to finance efficiency measures utilized by the court. It allows the court to purchase products for court efficiency. We're estimating about $7,589 to be collected for that. If there are any questions about any of that, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes, sir. How many orders issued for abatement, as far as like for running illegal businesses and code violations? I'm sorry, did you hear that? I might have not been speaking directly into the mic.
Yeah, you said, you said how many, how many orders have been issued for abatement issues?
That's correct, yes, sir.
I know right now, since we, it takes a little bit, the normal prosecutor in these municipal courts haven't been doing it as much. The ones that we have know how to do it, and I think to date, there are somewhere between 15 and 20 that have, that have been done last time I looked at it, but I don't, I don't, you know, just like any other judge, I don't keep score, so, but, but, but.
Would that be about a year to date, then? Does your guess be 15 to 20 year to date?
I think 15 to 20 since, since, since we started doing it. They ramped it up last year, so there's been about 15 or 20 of them, but if they don't come before me, I don't see them. If they, if they do the, if they, if they do the abatement procedures on it, a lot of times the people will come in and make a deal, because there's some pretty severe penalties with the abatement. So unless they, unless they say I want a trial or a hearing, then I, then I don't see them. So as far as how many of them that they've, that they've issued, we could ask the prosecutor or the clerk to probably look it up for us.
Remind me again, when did, when, when did the court, when did that start, the court was able to go and issue those, those particular orders, sir?
The court was, was able to start doing it in September of 2017, when we became a record court. They also passed a, they, they, they passed along the government code, and it's kind of weird to tie it all together, but it gave the municipal courts concurrent jurisdiction with the, with the district court for certain abatement actions.
So we were able to go ahead and actually issue these, these orders starting September of 2017?
Somewhere in there.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Prior to that, we couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't do it, because it was outside of our jurisdiction.
I was, yes, I'm, I was. I was, yes, I was aware of that unfortunately.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Ms. Winger?
Yes, ma'am. So I've just asked Mr. Rappley, the only, you know, sheet in here that has any other information seems to be a revenue sheet and it has court income. Is that before or after expenses, do you know?
You would have to ask the city manager that. Typically, on the revenue, the judges, I'm not supposed to get into the revenue because I don't want to say that I'm, you know, trying to make more money or less money. We're just, we, fair. But I would imagine, Mr. Rappley, is it, is it, is that before, after expenses?
That's, again, we have a summary here. And the budget here has all the revenues, which encompasses total revenues for those departments in particular that generate the revenue, which.
I understand, but I want to know if the court revenue in particular is before or after expenses because we have the other sheet that I just referenced where you have all of the, the costs, the salaries and all of the other expenses relating to the court. So I want to know if this revenue is before or after.
This, this would be after. I mean, this is the proposed, I mean, excuse me, the before, because this is the proposed budget. We're estimating these revenues for, for next year based on the expenses for this department.
So after everything has been paid, the amount that's listed here as revenue is actually the profit to the city?
So we have a 2019 projected ending of, of, of potential revenue within each line item. For court in particular, and I'll go down to it.
I see that, that's not, doesn't answer my question however. Has 600,000, I see that it says that.
That's 600,000 in revenue that we plugged in last year for the budget.
Is, is the term revenue being used as, as a description for, for gross income before expenses?
This is, this is total revenue that was generated for, for the general fund within the court.
So I guess that's a yes?
Yes.
Yes, I, I saw those, but it still didn't answer the question, but thank you.
So are we talking about like a P and L then? Is that what, is that what y'all were trying, trying to get to? Revenue?
No, there's no P and L, it's just.
But point is that the expenditures seem to be higher than the income, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, Ms. McLean?
The revenues proposed for 2020 for court income at line 01-00-4030 is $550,000. If you look on the expense line, or specifically the municipal court expenses, 2020 city manager proposed budget, the expenses are proposed of $321,928 and I believe that is a lower number than 550,000.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McLean. Do we have any more questions for Judge McCall? Judge, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if we don't have anything further on that, we will move on to presentation and discussion of the preliminary fiscal year 2020 budget for the fire department. Chief?
Mayor, council, city staff and residents, thank you for your time this evening. Basically, we'll be going over our budget for the upcoming year. As far as our line items, we're pretty much pat on what we were at for last year. We are projecting an increase in the overtime light item from 35 to 50,000. On other items, and once we get the PowerPoint up. Okay. If you want to go ahead. As you see on the budget line items, we also have on the 01-40535, we have an increase of $2,000 and that is in the gas, oil and tire line item due to, in the upcoming year, we're gonna need to be replacing some tires on the engine. We've got price quotes already that are in the range of $2,000. On your next adjustment will be the building maintenance supplies. With our, with the building getting older, there are some issues that do need to be addressed as normal housekeeping, housekeeping issues. So I increased that light item by $1,000 from 5,500 to 65. And the next line item is our maintenance and equipment. And again, too, with some of our equipment that we have, there's gonna be some additional maintenance that's required. So I increased that line item for another $1,000. I did find three other line items that due to historical data that I did decrease for a total of $1,200 over those three line items. So looking at those items on the budget, we're looking at a net increase of 2,800 on items not within the salary category. This was just a small comparison or a quick comparison as far as our department among the other cities, anywhere between 2,800 population up to 30,000 population, comparing these cities with the call volume and comparing our city of Castle Hills with just under 4,500. We're running pretty high call volume among any other city that's below 10,000 population. Between us, Balconies and Chaveno Park are, we're right around that 1,000 mark. One of the key things that when I first came in, I knew that the department had been kind of in limbo up until the time because of the extended time that they had had an interim fire chief and so forth. And I just wanted to make a concerted effort when I came in that we would hit the ground running and, and have a vision and a plan to progress in the future. Immediately, I had meetings with the majority, well, actually all of the personnel in the department and got a consensus of what their priorities, what they believe were the needs of the department and what they would like to see out of the department moving forward. And pretty much across the board, it was a consensus on training. And I've been very proactive throughout my entire career as far as training. And I've always had initiatives and nurtured those individuals that wanted to advance up through the ranks of, of the fire department. And also showing the advantages of having a highly trained and educated department. So one of the key things that I've presented to you tonight is a education and incentive pay program. Because currently, we do not have one with the department. In front of you, I've, there's a spreadsheet. I've included a lot of, a lot of different information for you to decipher. The first page here is going over what other departments in the area offer as far as incentive pay and education pay. As far as the basics, the other departments will pay for a master's degree, a bachelor's degree or an associate's degree. And then also different basic fire certifications as far as an intermediate firefighter, advanced firefighter and master firefighter. And these are what the, the other departments are paying and what's highlighted in red for Castle Hills is what I've proposed for your consideration. This next slide, pretty much, I've taken the current personnel that we have right now, took what their current salaries, calculated in the 2% COLA based upon what is being proposed for this upcoming year. Talking with the personnel, I found out what types of certifications they've already, they've already had. So based upon that information, I started to project what the financial outcome would be for the city if we adopted these different phases of incentive and education pay. And these numbers that I have put in are the numbers that I've proposed based upon the information that I've collected from the other departments and cities. These other certifications through the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, who certifies and controls the fire departments in, in Texas, there's different certifications on different specialty trainings that we can receive as far as instructor, fire inspector, arson investigator, there's fire officer certifications, and then also pump operator and aerial operator. And based upon the certifications that the personnel already carry, I made these projections based again on data that I received from other cities and from other cities that I've worked for. And these are annual amounts. So this is what they would be paid above and beyond their base salary. And I've also included their EMS certification. Because currently, we have one paramedic and one advanced intermediate, or I'm sorry, intermediate, EMT intermediate. And then of course, myself as an EMT intermediate. As you can see, that column to the right is the total for each individual. And then at the bottom will be the overall total of cost if we implement all these incentive pays for each certificate. This is pretty much a breakout of any option that you could possibly try to work in. As you'll see on the forwarding slides, I've also, is proposing a plan to gap a little bit more between the different ranks in the department. I believe if, if the personnel feel that for the extra responsibilities and the extra duties that they incur, that having a little bit more than just barely over a dollar in an hour of pay would probably give some more incentive for individuals to go out and get the, get the necessary trainings and get the next necessary education to help promote themselves through the department. And again, I'm, I'm very much at sponsoring anyone that wants to show an initiative to, to get educated and to be, to be more trained. So again, with these different columns, I've, I've showed you what the base pay with your 2% COLA per individual. And then also if we instigate the incentive pay, what the overall cost, your next column after that would be a 2% COLA plus a 1% pay increase for the lieutenant's position above the 2% COLA. And then a 2% increase for the captain's position above the 2% COLA along with the incentive and education pay. And then your final column is with your 2% COLA, the incentive pay, a 2% increase across the board for the lieutenant's positions, and then a 3% increase for the captain's positions. This is a breakdown of what the, the overall hourly wages would increase to per, per position. As far as capital improvements, besides the other, the other items that are, have already been pre-arranged to carry over to this year with our radio replacement, purchase of another, a second purchase of our PPE. And that'll be the second of a, of a three-stage program that I was made aware of that we've been doing. We, I was also going to propose to you that in upcoming next month, there is an NFPA 1851 standard that regulates our PPE, which is our turnout gear. And the NFPA has revised this standard and they will be coming out with a 2020 edition, September 20th of 2019, where it'll be available for publication and implementation. And I've been in discussions with Texas Commission on Fire Protection that once that's implemented, that they're going to adopt the NFPA standard in its entirety based upon whatever the effective date, once that's published. I've been told failure to follow that standard, of course, will cause the department to be considered non-compliant, which also carries certain fines and by, for each violation per, per day. So again, once they distinguish that if you are non-compliant, that they will advise you of your corrections that needed to be done in, in a certain timeline. My proposal is, oh, I'm sorry. Part, some of the changes that are different than the current NFPA standard that is in effect right now is that if the gear is exposed to an IDLH atmosphere, which means it's contaminated with smoke, some type of contaminant from hazardous materials or anything that, where the gear is exposed to any kind of contaminant, after that incident is over, it immediately has to be taken out of service and bagged until it is returned back to the station. And that's a change. What's required now is that the gear has to have what is called an advanced cleaning. And an advanced cleaning is a process of going through an extractor and a, and a drying cabinet to put this gear back in service. Currently, the gear could be brought back, scrubbed down and just rinsed off and the firefighter could continue to use that gear the rest of the shift until the next morning, it could be taken somewhere to where it would have an advanced cleaning. So now that gear has to be taken out of service immediately. Also, the gear, no matter how infrequently it's used or if it's kept in storage, it has to be cleaned twice a year per an advanced cleaning. And detailed records of, of any cleaning and any repairs to the gear needs to be kept and it will be reviewed on an annual basis by the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. My solutions to, or I'm sorry, we jumped up one. Our current practices is, as I gone over, the firefighters, when they get back, they'll continue their shift with that gear, they'll clean it off the best they can. Once the shift is over, their gear will be taken by someone from the oncoming shift to either Chaveno Park or Leon Valley, which both of those departments currently have extractors. Unfortunately, Chaveno Park's extractor is out of service right now, so we're limited to taking all of our gear over to Leon Valley to have it cleaned. Unfortunately, with this turnaround, based upon most of our calls that we're gonna go to if our gear is contaminated, more than likely, it's a call that we've gone on with our mutual aid departments. So that puts an extra tax on Chaveno Park to not only be cleaning their own gear, but other departments' gears such as, such as ours. So this causes about a two-day turnaround in getting the gear back and back in service. So that way, once the firefighter comes back in, he's, he's off for his 48 hours, he'll come back in that next, that morning of his shift, put his gear back together and be back in service. We have had on instances where a certain firefighter is covering another shift for either an overtime shift or something like that. So he'll actually have to use that same set of gear for two shifts in a row that has not been advanced cleaned yet. And will have to, he'll only have one day in between. So he'll have a third shift that he uses it and then he'll have a two-day gap to where that gear can be taken and cleaned. They have strict guidelines on, from TCFP, that gear isn't allowed to be shared or loaned because each set is specifically made for each firefighter. So it kind of. So it kind of causes other issues by them not having a second set or having the ability to get this gear back in service at a, at a, um, quicker stance. So again, for my solutions that I'm presenting to you is, um, again, purchasing an extractor. The extractors can clean four to six sets of gear at a time, uh, in, in one cycle. Uh, the, uh, purchasing the gear drying cabinet will decrease the time that it takes. Norm, what we do right now, because neither one of the departments have the capability to handle a large sum of gear to dry, it will get, just get hung out and air-dry, which on certain very humid days, it will take quite a while for your gear to dry, and that's, again, is what causes for the extended time. By doing the gear in-house, we've talked with other departments that, that have the process within their departments, you can turn this whole process into a three-to-four-hour turnaround. By the time you get back to the station, immediately start cleaning gear, you can do our four sets, and on average, majority of all our calls that we're gonna go to, it would be highly unlikely to have more than four individuals that have gear that would need an advanced cleaning. But if we did, doing this in-house, we would be able to get this gear back in service and limiting the exposures to these firefighters, to these contaminants. Um, if you haven't heard already or been aware and, and, um, seen different broadcasts on the news, there's a very large push by NFPA and also the Texas Fire Commission on limiting the amount of exposures we have to firefighters to cancer-causing agents. And because of the types of fires that burn out now, um, just about everything, any environment that we go into is, is a, um, environment that harbors a lot of these carcinogens. So limiting the time that they have to wear this gear and getting it back into service is the key thing to being able to, to purchase, uh, these two items. That is a picture of the extractor that I'm talking about, it's specially made for doing turnout gear. We've already requested quotes from different vendors, prices have ranged between seventy-five-hundred to twelve thousand. And then for the hose ca- I'm not, I'm sorry, um, the gear cabinet, which you can also dry hose in it if you need to, but anyway, um, these, the coats we have gotten are, have been from eighty-nine hundred to twelve thousand one hundred. So our complete cost of both units installed, and we've already measured areas in the fire station, we've got a perfect site that's already right next to our current washer dryer, and there's an electric panel in that corner also, um, we're looking at a price around nineteen thousand to have it completely finished. And that's it.
Chief, a quick question, what does, what's, what's IDLH?
It's, um, dangerous life and health, health condition, immediate danger to life and health. And that is, again, any, mainly any condition where you have to wear an SCBA.
Oh, it's not like a chemical compound?
No, 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 it's, it's anything where you're, where you can't go into it and breathe the air that's there.
Got you. Okay. Ms. Winger?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, chief, um, right now, as you say, you're taking the gear to one of these two cities.
Yes.
So there's some time spent in taking that gear there?
Yes.
Do you, do you know what that is?
Um, well, I, the last time when we had the, the incident on Honeysuckle, um, it was a thirty-minute drive for me to take the gear from our station to Leon Valley.
And you have to pick it up?
And then to go back and pick it up, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so thirty minutes each way?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, sounds about right. Um, okay, so that would be eliminated right there.
Exactly.
Okay, and, and then the other thing is, do they charge us?
No, ma'am. They, they do not. As, as of right now, no, they don't.
And, so in other words, uh, it's not a cost, but the point is, we can't always get it done.
Right.
And so therefore, we would not be able to charge if other cities came to us?
No, no, it, it's usually a, um, just a common courtesy. Uh, and again, Leon Valley, when they heard that Chavino, um, Park's unit was down, they immediately said, "Bring everything over that you can, and, you know, and we'll, we'll take care of it for you." Um, which I'm sure we would do the same thing, if Leon Valley or Chavino Park's units go down, then they would come over and use ours. Um, you know, at some point, you may wonder if, if using, using another department's causes wear and tear on their units more than what it would normally do for them, and they're bearing all of the costs, so some of this might be limited over time.
Well, that might be something everybody wants to consider. Um, if, you know, if, if we start doing it, they might want to consider it also, because as you point out, it's not just wear and tear.
Right.
Um, you're talking about electricity, you're talking about water, which is getting more expensive by today.
Right. But based upon the restrictions and these mandates that TCFP and FPA are, are presenting to us right now, pretty much every department in the area to operate is either they are going, going to have to have probably at least three sets of gear per firefighter to enable them to have backup gear for those firefighters if they do not have an in-house extractor and gear dryer. Because immediately when they get back to the scene, I mean, to the station, they're gonna, that gear is out of service, and if there's not another set that is specifically meant for that firefighter, that firefighter is out of service. And it doesn't matter if it's a fire alarm, or any other call, or an accident where they have to do extrication, these are all calls that need to have a firefighter with appropriate PPE. So it's gonna be a necessity to do one or the other. Either you're going to stockpile your PPE, or you can purchase the extractor in a gear dryer and necessitate a quicker turnaround on, on your gear.
So are these the only two other, other areas within all of the other cities in Bear County, not counting San Antonio, um, that have these, or these are just the two that we use?
No, just the two that we use. I, I know for a fact Alamo Heights has, um, and I'm sure majority of all the other departments. And if, and I know the departments that don't have them now are starting to budget for them based upon what we were told at the Alamo Area Fire Chiefs meeting.
Chief, you were in Almost Park, do they have it?
No, we did, we do not, um, or we did not, they did the same thing, Alamo Heights had the units, and we would take ours over there, but again, Almost Park will be budgeting for an extractor and, um, a dryer based upon what's coming around the corner.
So you're, you're thinking now is that that's the direction that most fire departments are gonna be going in, is getting their own?
Yes, it's either, either that route, or they'll be, again, purchasing excessive amounts of gear, so they'll have those backup gears for those firefighters.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, chief. Ms. McLean?
Um, chief, just so the, the residents that are in attendance and council can understand the cost benefit of having the extractor and the dryer over the turnout gear, the extra sets, can you remind me what the cost of one set of personalized gear for a, one fireman is?
Well, just the coat and pants are, um, about eighteen to nineteen hundred a set. Um, your boots are anywhere between three to four hundred, helmets are another two hundred, um, gloves are a hundred. We're getting the, the new particulate hoods for the firefighters, which are a hundred dollars apiece. So, you know, you're looking at nearly, I would say rounding everything out, probably close to thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars for a complete set of gear.
So for a whole shift of firemen, if you assume there are six people on the shift, then we've paid for the extractor basically?
Yes.
With a set of?
Easily, and then some, yes, ma'am. And, and part of my plan too is now that we are purchasing new gear prior to our older gear expiring, um, I've been telling the firefighters that when you get your new gear, your old gear will become your backup gear. And so now, when they do come back, and they have that three-to-four-hour timeframe that their gear's being cleaned, they do have that second set of gear that they'll be able to respond with. And over time, I'll develop another plan to, to make sure that each firefighter is guaranteed to have that second set.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, chief. Mistress Andersons?
Yes, chief. Does this, does the price mentioned here, does this include any maintenance plans? Would that be something that you'd be considering, or how is that normally done?
That, um, again, will address those maintenance issues, but pretty much the only other additional, um, item that we will have to purchase will be the, um, detergent that's used especially for the, the PPE. And it's something that we already-
I'm assuming it's not tied, I mean, I mean, it's something that's-
Yes, yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot of different ones without me actually promoting a certain brand, but, um, we currently carry that anyway, right now, because that was part of our program as far as cleaning gear when we came back to give an, an initial clean. So it's something that we've already invested in and we already carry.
So you mentioned a thirty-minute transit time between here and Chavino Park, does that-
Well, no, between here and Leon Valley.
Uh, Leon Valley?
Yeah, of course.
Does that include the loading and unloading of all the devices?
No, no, no.
And so maybe add another thirty to forty minutes on top of that, then?
Right. Um, the, the last time I did it, it was probably an hour and forty-five minute turnaround between me going back and forth and, and getting the gear.
So fair to say, three and a half hours for an entire-
Sure.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McCormick?
Do you have any idea what the operational life is of an extractor or of the gear dryer?
The gear dryers, um, I have not had any other department or been privy to, um, any limitations on those. There's very little wear and tear other than, uh, the heating element and the fan, and majority of those will only be used strictly, again, um, on a basis of when we have gear that needs to be cleaned based upon a, a structure fire and, and, you know, crossing our fingers, hopefully those are, are limited times. The extractor, um, I've talked with other departments, and, um, some of them are about eight years old, and they notice, you know, like anything else, you tend to start having maintenance issue with certain motors or belts, but they can be repaired. So it's not, uh, a necessity that you're gonna have to make this entire purchase every ten years or something like that.
Have you looked into the probable maintenance costs of this equipment over time?
No, sir, not at this time.
Have you looked into, uh, maintenance contracts with any company that might provide it for this kind of equipment?
I've been in discussions with the company that does a lot of our testing on, on gear, but I have not developed a maintenance plan. I've, I've, that's part of my, my five-year plan, 'cause I'm doing the same thing with, with items at the station. Our overhead doors are a key thing, and that's another expense that, that we'll probably have to be looking for in the future, but I've, I've been in contact with, with the company to try to get a maintenance plan on that. And I believe that always having some type of maintenance plan can extend the life of that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next we have a presentation discussion of the preliminary fiscal year budget, uh, twenty twenty budget for the police department.
Mayor, real quick, on the chief's, uh, budget he provided, or excuse me, his presentation?
Yes, sir.
His two items in there for certification pay and the cleaning equi- um, cleaning processor is not in the current prop- proposed budget, so it's unfunded right now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McLean?
Mr. Rabbley, could you repeat? I heard that the extractor was not in the current proposed budget, what was the other item you said was not?
The, the certification pay that's outlined, um, for the department itself right now?
Thank you.
The incentive table that, that the chief's put together.
Good evening, council, mayor, staff, citizens. Just to preface the, uh, PowerPoint here, it's only about nine slides, but there are no increases into the regular, uh, general fund line items for, for, uh, police this year. Uh, same as last year, budget neutral. State of the police department, um, this is our second year with our ROER, uh, that following, following the state's lead on that, we are, uh, doing very well to a person. Our test results have been, um, extremely, substantially higher than the, uh, than the average around the state. And all of that is a contributor to a reduction in health costs, uh, recruiting, morale, and operational readiness, of course. I should've made that, yeah, exactly, thank you, sir. Uh, successful warrants initiation, this is year six. Uh, our model has been successfully deployed in sister cities upon consultation with us and, and the warrant officer. Organization recently, uh, hired two and is currently down one other position. One of those two new officers is on patrol, uh, on his own now, and the other one remains in FTO, just begun about two weeks ago. We're glad to have both of them, and we'll introduce them at a council meeting here, uh, in the near future. And we continue to, continue to get reimbursement of the, of the HIDA salary. Further, we continue to, to remain a top-tier training hub. We host the FBI LEADER course here every year, as we will be doing so. We've, we've started the trilogy this year already, and, and it'll follow up here by November. This saves, saves us to about forty-eight hundred dollars, um, on training as a result of this, this partnership with FBI LEADER. It's a, it's a top-tier, uh, training course, that many agencies come from all over the country to attend, and certainly all over the state. All of our patrol sergeants have graduated with the trilogy, as are our admin staff, of course. Uh, all tenured, tenured corporals have, there's one that remains, and he'll get his done, uh, here in the next couple of months. All senior officers have graduated the trilogy, and all detectives have as well. Financially, most departments would never be able to entertain this, but we, uh, through our networks, we've, we've made this partnership, and, and it's been a real, uh, mutually beneficial. More aptly, it's about seven hundred dollars a block, seven hundred dollars for that trilogy course, and there's three, and that's per officer. Just a few workload statistics, narcotics cases, thirty-four percent increase from two thousand fourteen till now, and we use two thousand fourteen because that was the first full year that I was here. Uh, and we also changed our data collection methodology beginning with that year. So those are all consistent data methodologies, collection. Same for arrests, about forty-four percent increase from fourteen to eighteen. We, we wholeheartedly expect eighteen to exceed last year's, however, we were down, um, two full officers for, for all of two thousand eighteen. And we were marginally lower at that, so we, that, that was the, the basis for what we think would have been an increase again this year. Investigated cases, our I cases, twenty-seven percent increase from two thousand fourteen to two thousand and eighteen. Uh, last year, we presented a ci- a city comparison, and, um, these still remain the highest investigated cases workload i- of the suburbs in the area. And that includes, you know, the, the entire T of San Antonio. Total police calls, uh, nineteen point five percent increase from fourteen to eighteen. Again, um, everything encompassed, is encompassed here for, that we do here, uh, to include patrol buys and some citizen-driven stuff, and, um, certainly being down two, uh, had us right there at about the same as last year, but we expect, our expectations were that it would have been higher. Quick, quick brief on the twenty twenty seizure funds, uh, Fund thirteen, state seizure fund balance is thirty-four thousand, five thirty-five, forty-two. Federal seizure fund balance is, uh, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents. This is a snapshot of, uh, state mandated budget proposal that we are required to provide for state seizure. Basically, it just, we, it's arbitrary, of course, because you never know what, what might come up that you make a purchase out of, or how much funds may come in. We, um, we designated five thousand of, of expenditures and projected year-end revenue of the same. We anticipate that to be, uh, we're being cautiously optimistic, we expect it to be much more than that, uh, on the revenue portion. For the federal seizure budget, uh, we estimate, spending possibly twenty-five thousand out of that, and we project the same year-end revenue of about twenty-five thousand. Again, these are arbitrary. Uh, over the years since we've initiated this program, it has consistently gone up substantially more than twenty-five thousand a year, and, and has proved to be a, um, a, a very good resource and, for, for our city and certainly our, our policing efforts. For the general fund budget proposal, our operational budget remains neutral for the second consecutive year with, with exactly no changes to the two thousand and nineteen budget, uh, from the, from the operational line items. Now, from the salary increases, we will have, uh, an increase in and above, uh, in addition to the projected COLA increase, and that increase will be thirteen thousand, seven eighty-one, eighty-four. And this accommodates the yearly step increases for our eligible line-level officers. And, and more aptly there, when, when, when each year for the first five years, folks promote a step, um, as they gain more experience- And, and more aptly there, when, when each year for the first five years, folks promote a step as they gain more experience and become more valuable to the city in doing so. We find it prudent to, to reward them and, and the benefit that we receive from that. And this total increase for all officers receiving step promotions next year is again thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Pretty insignificant, I believe last year it was, it was real close to the same, twelve, twelve, high twelves. And this is just a spreadsheet showing you the operational line items that they remain the same as they were last year, as they were, as what was adopted last year.
It seemed was in the bud, in the, in the packet.
Can you repeat that, Ms. Winger?
We don't seem to have the information on the seizure funds in the packet.
They should be in there, they're under the, the special funds in the back, I saw them moment. And, and they may be different because I didn't have those exact, the most recent numbers when I, when I put this, so it could be slightly up. And then lastly, we have our twenty twenty LEOS funds, which is a state, state participation for training. They, they dedicate funds to us for that and we estimate that we'll use approximately three thousand. Some of you, I know Councilman McCormick did and some others may have participated in, in a training simulator that we bring in annually. And we will bring it in again this year and that, that, these funds we use primarily for that. And again, they're distributed by the state to local law enforcement agencies that do participate, you have to enroll in it and we make sure we are prudent in that area. That is the end of the presentation, any questions?
Counsel, do we have any questions for chief? Okay.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
Citizens?
Next, we have presentation discussion of the preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty budget for public works department. Mr. Harada.
Mr. Rappley. I'd like to make a request. Very hard to read when you have a colored background, this is almost impossible to read on the blue background, the fire department was hard to read on the orange. So if we could please get these with a white background subsequently, thank you.
It's fine, we will do that.
Can we turn you off on the overhead lights or is it going to probably end up glaring in the sound?
I think I might glare this out.
Good evening, council, residents. I'm looking at the public works budget, going across all the line items, pretty much everything stayed the same on my line items. As you can see on the presentation as to. Thank you. On the presentation for the public works. I'm sorry, I might be punching that wrong one. Right side, thank you, okay. Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, just, excuse, I'm sorry, okay, the goal of this presentation is to inform the general public of the public works budget, operations and use in taxpayers' dollars. This is intended to show the importance of having a motivated and well-trained public works team as well as maintaining effective equipment and vehicles in order to provide quality service to the residents. Public works overview, the public works department consists of three divisions within eight employees. The street division, I'm not sure if that's typo, but it was supposed to be three at full-time employees. At city hall, I have one janitorial person that cleans up the city hall in the police department. In the sanitation department, I have six employees. In animal control, we use employees as needed through the department. Public works expenses and revenues, the public work service produces following revenues. In the streets, you can see that twenty eighteen, we had six thousand fifty-eight and in twenty nineteen, we have five thousand eight hundred and twenty-three. Abatements right now for anything co-compliance gives us, twenty eighteen, we had two thousand sixty-seven. And right now in two thousand or twenty nineteen, that number went and shifted because I just did another abatement, so you're probably looking at about three thousand dollars now. Animal control, twenty nineteen, animals on registrations for, for tags and fees of, of boarding. Now, we have a twelve hundred for the, for the year. Public work services produce the following expenses, sanitation in twenty eighteen, you can see on the recycle, nine thousand three hundred, I'm sorry, nine hundred and thirty-six, eighty-four. In twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we had two thousand. And garbage fees, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty. And then on twenty nineteen, a hundred and twenty thousand. Okay, street budget, consists of a three hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five. The street, the street team performs seven, seventy-two hours per month, mowing, trimming and cleaning, sixteen hours per month on minor street repairs. Sixteen, sixteen to twenty-four hours per month on signs maintenance. Street functions, minor street repairs on cold patch repair, crack sealing of streets, hot tar, crack, crack sealing for applications. Seal coating and minor paving projects by contractors, street signs, installa, I'm sorry, installation, I'm seeing blurry. I can see what you're saying about the, the color in the background, Mrs. Winger. Installations or replacements, cleaning and sediment removal of the drainages, mowing and trimming and cleaning of easements with. Also, I can't. Watering of subdivisions, monuments and foliage, graffiti removal, surcharges and, and collections, variations of abatements and duties, private property, on private properties. Put up and take down barricades during storms, janitorial service for the city hall and the police department. These are just some of the clipped slides here, images that we do on our cracks, with our crack sealer on the streets to make sure that, we're making sure that they're sealed and water isn't getting to the base. And here we have drainage cleanout, culverts, this one's right off of Blewett, and right between Jackson Keller and Blewett. And you can see a street repair here, this is a cold patch, UPM cold patch that we do, we use, it's similar to hot mix. And you can see the graffiti, a removal that our street department takes care of on the overpasses and some of your entrances to some of the monuments. Sanitation budgets, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred, daily operations, use of the following vehicles, sanitation truck, a two thousand and nine Sterling, a sanitation truck, a twenty thirteen International, and sanitation truck, a twenty seventeen International. Mr. Rappley's looking at already, I think he mentioned to you, we're already going to be replacing that two thousand and nine Sterling. Sanitation functions, garbage collections, brush and leaf collections, recycle collections. The sanitation team services over fifteen hundred homes per week, collections on twelve to fourteen tons of garbage per collection day. Collections, ten to fifteen ton per week of brush and leaves, collections of four to six tons per week of recycling. Now you can see a clip here that, going up to the house, this is whatever it takes for the sanitation. As you know, sometimes we have a breakdown, you won't believe it, sometimes all three trucks are down. And this is what the sanitation and the street department get together, then go and make sure that we're collecting other residential homes and bringing it in. Then we have one truck that will haul it to the landfill. Animal control budget's at twenty-five hundred dollars, the animal control team picks up and processes animals for impoundment and provides daily care. Animal care, animal control functions, pick up domestic dogs and cats running at large, pick up wildlife for, for rescue. Dog bite and quarantine, individual, individual and agency adoptions, daily feeding and care of shelter animals. And a clip there, animal control picking up dog running at large. And there you see we're picking up wildlife and then sometime we coordinate with wildlife rescue to take the animals over there so you can take care of them. Special services, the public works team has received many com. Complaints from the residents for the extra special services. Excuse me, I'm sorry, my back is hurting. Compliments from the special residents for the extra special services they provide. Regular pickup of garbage and homes of residential who are physically unable to take care, take their cans to the streets. Install large, install large Christmas tree and decorations each year. Install lighting and clean mold grounds at the commons for the special events, crime prevention night, fiesta and other festivals. Assisted, assists with improvements of subdivision monuments, installed the street clock in the front of the commons and restored the common sign. I'm sorry, clicked too fast on that, but you'll see that, I think it's moving by itself. You'll see the, some of the constructions that we also do, not just, you know, the regular street work. And there you see the restoration of that common sign that, trying to keep it preserved. And I think, here's where I mentioned that our budget pretty much stayed the same across the board. Mr. Rappley's going to adjust some of the monies for the street fund to increase it for pu, public infrastructure. And sanitation, on the line items that you all see. If you all have any questions, let me know, but like I said, bringing them across, they pretty much stayed balanced, always trying to stay in a, in a good budget.
Thank you, Rick, counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Harada? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Lastly, presentation discussion of review of the fiscal year twenty twenty proposed budget. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor and counsel, this is the, obviously the proposed twenty twenty budget, proposed budget you've heard from the departments, obviously given an overview of their departments. Obviously, some of them requesting potential items like in fire that aren't funded right now. I'll go through it pretty quick here. I'll go over the budget overview and then personnel and then some conclusions and next steps. The proposed budget is, is balanced, transparent and obviously seeks to create a roadmap for success by continuing to build on solid foundation. Our basic services are covered at levels and adequately funded. Our reserves are maintained at six months, right now just over six months, adequate levels which protects the city from future uncertainties. We utilize and predict through the revenue through reasonable levels through historical data. Department and program costs are budgeted at a reasonable level which parallel the cost of providing the services. We've already built in right now a two percent COLA. And then unassigned fund balance, as I mentioned, the reserve should be used for emergencies, one-time expenditures or capital improvements. Just some highlights in the general fund, this encompasses police, fire, public works and administration. Obviously, all the general fund encompasses the employee salaries are funded out of this. The proposed general fund budget is seven million, one hundred and eighty-two, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and expenses are budgeted at seven million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two. The general fund budget is based on the ad valorem of what council proposed last week for a tax rate of point five zero one per one hundred evaluation, which is above the effective rate and the same rate as the adopted budget in two thousand and nineteen. This was the recommendation for the proposed budget to maintain the same tax rate as I did before, as we did before last year as council adopted. The two thousand and twenty proposed budget is based on being physically conservative and reflects a balanced budget. Under property taxes, the total taxable assessed value is five hundred and seventy-two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine oh two. Proposed total M and O, maintenance and operation revenue is budgeted at three million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-six. Obviously, if we maintain the current, current tax rate, the revenue difference generated from this year, from last year to this year would be additional about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The homestead average taxable value is three hundred and nineteen thousand, six fifty-six. This basically equates to one cent of thirty-one dollars and ninety-seven to the homeowner. Excuse me, back up. Under revenue here, obviously I had mentioned that the revenue is seven million, one hundred and eighty-two, eight hundred and eighty-two. The sales tax and property tax encompasses majority of the revenue here being four million, seven sixty-three, six twenty-six. Other major, major revenues include municipal court, permit, inspections, franchise fees and sanitation. The second largest source of revenue from sale is from sales tax. We forecasted about seven point three percent increase for two thousand and twenty. It's a conservative increase based over the two thousand and nineteen projected year end. Obviously, as you may know, sales tax is unpredictable, the rise and fall of the economy, making it difficult to estimate, but we're trying to be conservative as far as budgeting next year. Here I've broken down on this slide all of our revenue summaries, which gives you a total from the court income, step, sanitation, ad valorem, sales tax and franchise fees, the seven million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight eighty-two. And here's a graph that just basically shows the distribution of those revenues. Obviously, being ad valorem is the largest portion of the pie there. Under expenses here, seven million, one eighty-two, eight eighty-two. The ending estimate total in reserve balance for the city is three million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven forty-five, which is roughly the six months, or slightly over the six months, sorry. Personal payroll costs are obviously the biggest expense in our budget, in the operating budget. City's largest expense categories, obviously, public safety, police, fire, dispatch, public work, street maintenance, sanitation, municipal court and of course, administration. And then here is a revenue, I mean. And then here is a revenue, I mean, excuse me, an expense breakdown by department and the proposed budget. And here's a graph that shows the largest portion of distribution by expense from each department, which obviously you can see the police and then fire, which again, public safety encompassing a large part of our expenses in the general fund. The 2020 overview here for streets and drainage funds in the proposed budget. Obviously, the Counsel has recognized the priority of streets and drainage. We have a number of active projects in the pipeline being engineered. Obviously, one under construction, a very large project. We obviously see the Antler Project being concluded at the end of the year as far as expenses. However, we have multiple projects that are either engineered or being engineered currently for streets and drainage. What we've done here, obviously, in having prioritized collectively in a CIP, streets, maintenance are available for future infrastructure projects. Revenue for projects are obviously generated from sales tax for street maintenance, digital billboard, and the possibility, obviously, of issuing COs in the future. If that would be the case, it would be reflected next year. FY '20 proposed budget. After transferring out to cover the potential Banyan Glen Tower project, the Mimosa Cromeria engineering and the potential construction of that project, and then street maintenance for a seal coat project, we estimate or have an ending balance of $329,696 for the street maintenance. $780,529 for drainage utility. And the supplemental streets and drainage fund, $246,583, excuse me, $593. Under the capital replacement funds, the FY 2020 budget includes contingency fund, major vehicle purchases. We're proposing a balance, or excuse me, a proposed expenditure of $10,000 for a rescue truck, future, $60,000 for future fire radios, and then $50,000 plugged in for future vehicles for Public Works. The community infrastructure seed program. Obviously, we budgeted $50,000 last year. We obviously weren't able to utilize that fund until January 1st when the new budget started. We budgeted $50,000 last year. And now that basically the class work that's done out here in the lobby, we are at that mark. And so all projects identified last year have been completed as of August. As part of the 2020 proposed budget, it's recommended we allocate another $30,000 to continue with additional facility improvements. Some interior improvements to the building, possibly new carpet paint, audio visual as far as potential visual improvements to City Hall. And then possibly some improvements here. I know that it's been on the plan to improve the court offices here and expand possibly just in the back to allow for court operations. Workstation upgrade fund, $42,238. Just highlight quickly over the proposed budget personnel. Here's our personnel and our organizational chart that illustrates all the total number of employees and departments. The personal highlights in the 2020 proposed budget. Like I mentioned, we had already plugged in a 2% COLA for employees. The proposed budget includes the funding of a permit clerk and finance clerk full-time. These positions were only partially funded in FY 2019 budget. The property casualty insurance has been increased due to higher rates, deductibles. There's a percentage for the retirement has had a slight increase that we've been able to capture in this budget from 2019. And then right now, we plugged in a 15% increase in the city's health plan. We're waiting for re-rates. And as you recall, last year, I think we initially plugged in 16% into the proposed budget for the healthcare plan, and it came back at 9%. So there were some savings there. Under capital expenses, as I mentioned before, we set aside a future radio upgrade for 2020, budgeted $60,000. $30,000 last year. This gets us to $90,000 for new radios for fire. Set aside the $50,000 for public work vehicles. $25,000 for future fire vehicle. As we did last year, we replaced six sets of firefighter gear that was budgeted $16,800. We're going to plug, we plugged in that amount to replace six more sets this year. And of course, we've plugged in the principal payment for the fire truck and interest payment for the fire truck that was purchased a couple of years ago. The next steps with the budget, publish the notice that was done today as far as the tax rate. Our first public hearing on the tax rate is next Wednesday, August 28th at 6:30. Second public hearing on tax rate, September 10th, 2019, 6:30. First reading of the budget, FY 2002 proposed budget on September 17th, 6:30. And then adopt 2020 budget levy tax rate on September 24th, 2019 at 6:30. Mayor, that concludes the presentation on the FY 2020 proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have, Counsel, do we have any questions from Mr. Rappley? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rappley. Citizen comments? Do we have any comments, Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't have any questions, but I do have some comments about the budget. Would you like them now or after citizens?
Why don't you go ahead and make your comments right now when Ms. Gonzalez get in that list?
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't see a line item for census 2020. And it's my understanding that there's a fairly strong mandate that cities are supposed to be setting aside some money to fund that. I don't know what it would look like compared to, you know, what other cities are budgeting for that. I wouldn't think too much. We don't really have any line items related to code enforcement. And I know that about a year or so ago, we were, we were given a situation where it would have been nice to have had a line item for code enforcement, where it would have helped us as a council to know that we had money available to be able to make decisions that would, would help preserve and protect our properties in the city. And maybe that's not appropriate this year, maybe that's something to look at in the future. I would like to see the extractor for the fire department and the dryer in the amount of $19,000 included in the final budget. I think there's compelling reason to make sure we're complying with the new regulations coming down. I'm inclined to also agree to have the incentive pay included into the budget. It seems like that would bring our fire department in line a little bit with the step program that the Police Department has for increased pay based on the years of service. This would at least give our firefighters some compensation for their education and extra things that they've done. And then I have a huge question on sales tax. It recently dawned on me that anytime I order something on Amazon or online, that my address always defaults to San Antonio. So I've made an intentional effort anytime I buy something online to put Castle Hills. So I'm curious, are we as a city actually getting the sales tax revenue that is generated from our citizens when many, many of the websites default to San Antonio? Are we actually recovering that? Or is that going to San Antonio since it's a default? And so I don't know how we even begin to look into whether we're actually getting what we're due for sales tax.
Well, I know community, and we'll start with the Comptroller's Office because I know communities can pull sort of a privacy report to see the breakdown of sales tax in their, their community. So maybe we'll start there and see if we can drill down and find out how they're going through that process to distribute those sales tax. And if it's just going to San Antonio or the smaller communities surrounding here. And maybe because we don't have a post office, I don't know, but we can certainly find out in research.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
And just to make a note, as you mentioned, that those are some unfunded in the fire department. In order to balance the budget, you know, we did have sort of a surplus as a result of the additional ad valorem. To balance the budget, we plugged in $246,593, which you can find that under capital expenses at the bottom line of the budget on page 30, for balancing the budget and for indications on the tax rate. Because when you go above the tax rate, and as we did, above the effective rate, we had to post it correctly and put what we're utilizing that for. And we, you know, put it for street improvements under that fund, street and supplemental. But also, above that $180,000, there's roughly, you know, $70,000 or so that can be worked to see if some unfunded items may be able to captured in this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. We have two citizens sign up to be heard, Ms. Moreta Scott. You have three minutes, Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Counsel. My name is Moreta Scott. I live at 207 Prince Drive. There's one thing that I'd like to ask of you on this budget season is streets and drainage are a rallying cry. And yes, streets and drainage are very important. But I'd like you to remember this budget cycle that we do have capital improvement plans currently in place that's addressing our streets and drainage issues. They're bringing them together in an order where they can be part of the budget. They're going to be fixed. There's a long-term plan to fix them. Because as a resident, looking at this, streets and drainage are important to me. But the same time, if we have beautiful streets, but I'm a victim of a crime and I don't have police officers to drive on those streets to come help me if I'm assaulted or robbed, what good are those streets if we don't have an amazing police department? If I'm having a medical emergency, what good is a beautiful, fabulous street to drive on if I do not have EMTs and paramedics in the city here that can come help me when I'm having a medical emergency? If my home is on fire, what good is a fabulous 100 OCI street if we don't have the fire trucks and the equipment and the trained fire department employees to come put out my house when it's on fire? And the same thing, my garbage will pile up if we do not have an adequately staffed sanitation department and Public Works Department. It's just going to pile up. We may have glorious streets, but no one to come collect my garbage as it piles up. I also don't want to have wild animals that I can't call for someone to collect. And I would also like to have co-compliance be able to come if there's an issue, particularly as it seems to be with people running businesses out of their homes or whatnot. If our co-compliance officer is not there to come address it, but we have beautiful streets, where are we? And then lastly, to see justice done, if I can drive on the beautiful streets to come to court to see and have my day in court, whether I am unfortunately paying a ticket, I hope not. Or if I was a victim of a crime, or we have a code enforcement issue violation or an abatement that I'm a part of in dealing with, but no one is here at the court when I get here because we haven't funded it adequately. Just remember, streets and drainage, yes, that's important and that's a rallying cry. But it is not one that we need to decimate our budget to achieve. That's in there under the capital improvement plans. So please don't sacrifice my city services and the ability for me to live here and feel safe and secure to fund something that will be great. But if there's no one to use them, what's the point of having them? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Bernard Judemire?
Hello, Bernard Judemire, 115 East Castle Lane. I've just been noticing all over Texas, but TechStop is not really taking care of their streets as well as they used to with herbicides and weed eating and street sweeping. And I'd like to see something maybe more in the budget for maintenance of just kind of pick up the slack where they're not. I don't know why they're not, but that's what I've noticed. And I think it makes our city look dingy. You know, you see weeds popping up all over the curbs and rocks and stuff on the side. So I think we should put a little bit in the budget, extra in the budget for taking care of that slack that TechStop, because we can ask TechStop to do it, but it's all over Texas, so it's not just here. Just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if that is it, do we have any announcements by Counsel? Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, just a reminder, next Wednesday, we'll have another special meeting to obviously discuss the budget, but it'll be our first tax hearing for the tax rate.
Okay, thank you so much for everybody being here. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Everybody, have a good evening.